Committee and discussing it because there's a lot of options there, it's a lot of billing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so yeah, if we wanted to put it in the committee, maybe we'll get around to some discussions on that.
Yeah, it didn't sound like we're, we're gonna get anybody to buy it or buy it, maybe, but it's a big old building, it's a good building, but it's just too big.
That's the problem, it's very large, the ceilings are super high, no one uses those high ceilings anymore for much.
But it would serve our purpose for a city garage, correct?
Yes, if we wanted to commit to it.
And salt barn and everything else that we would, could possibly need. Store fire department equipment down there, whatever we need.
I'd be curious to see what the cost of a new facility versus, you know, what.
We've looked into that already, I mean, those numbers they can provide.
Yeah, that'd be great.
A lot of research towards that. Um, the salt barn alone is, was almost more than what we would wanna spend.
Well, more than we could ever get out of the building.
Right.
Absolutely, we can never sell that building, no matter what, if we sold that building, the only justification, we can talk about committee, the only justification would be jobs.
Right.
Because realistically, you're never gonna make, we're gonna lose money building a new building.
Sure.
Um, there's no.
Um, how much do we pay an electric there monthly? It's pretty high, you know?
It is high, and if we commit, that's one thing I would love, if we sit at the committee and we commit that's ours forever, I'm gonna rip out that three phases.
That's what I.
We'll rip that out and just step it down to standard two twenty, and I would, if we're gonna commit to it, let's commit to it and rip that stuff out.
If they rip that out, see if we can sell the cranes in there if they're working.
Scrap metal everything out of it we can, and then, I agree, so I would love that, let's sit it, if you want to sit in the committee.
Mm-hmm.
And we commit to it.
I'd you, Lenny?
We do. Yeah, well, we, we, we do rent off one of the barns.
Well, we could still do that, I mean, even if we changed.
I would love to do something with a millennial building.
What it does is it puts the, the topic to rest.
Yeah.
And then we're not, it's not, that we're sitting there with a buil- building that they feel they need to try to market.
Right.
So.
Agreed.
In a millennial building, we could still sell that if we needed to.
Yeah.
Or, I would love to do something, even if we just fix it up ourselves and use it, rent it out for some kind of purpose, um, I think we could do something with that space.
Commit this?
Uh, okay.
Alright, I think that's all I have, so we'll go on to legislation.
Second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, an ordinance by the council of the city of Welston, Ohio, adopting the Jackson County multi-jurisdictional natural hazard mitigation plan, and you cannot declare an emergency.
Bless you.
Second reading of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, a resolution awarding the water treatment chemicals aluminum sulfate, aluminum sulfate bulk, chlorine, sodium bisulfate, sodium fluorosilicate, and carbon in accordance with the chief operator's letter of bid recommend- recommendation to Brent Tagman. Second reading of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, a resolution awarding the water treatment chemicals bulk hydrated lime in accordance with the chief operator's letter of bid, bid recommendation to Carmus and declaring an emergency. Second reading of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, a resolution awarding the water treatment plant chemicals potassium permogana in accordance with the chief operator's letter of bid recommendation to Water Solutions Unlimited. First reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, an ordinance approving additional preparations to the general civil fund, supplies, materials, and maintenance.
Please sponsor for that.
Spangler.
So I'd like to explain that to you, so it's broken into two sections, there's ten thousand of it is for the, um, the purchase of the L V. Um, we have, we had money on our general silver, we spent a lot of money out there fixing that water, um, the lift stations, the ball we had going on out there. So we're just, we're gonna run the, we're gonna run the civil fund dry if I keep spending money out of it, um, so we, we had to, I wanted to ask for that money. The twenty thousand dollars right next to it, that is, and this one's optional, this is, 'cause I don't need your approval to do it, but this is me getting you guys to give me approval to do it. Uh, if you approve the money, you approve me to do it. Well, that'll be concrete on that lot, um, on the corner of, um, Ohio Avenue and Broadway. Um, we'll concrete that in, we, we priced out paving it, we priced out concrete, our guys can do the concrete, that's gonna be cheaper than us paying pavement to happen. Um, it'll look better, it'll last longer anyway, um, and we also were working with, uh, so Bob will have to abstain whenever it comes time to vote on this one. Um, we're actually gonna put an alley behind on, on their property, they agreed to it, put an alley behind their property, and we'll rent it back out the main alley, back to Ohio Avenue. Um, basically, we agreed to giving him two spots there, so he'll have two free spots, but he's gonna give us a right of way across his property, so that'll be a fair trade-off. We'll have to work with, uh, the attorney here, 'cause they wanted to make sure that we made it legal so that they're not liable, if, been an accident happened there, they don't wanna be liable for it, so we'll have to, we'll work to make, make a couple of the legal stuff aside, but, um, that's what that money's for.
Okay.
And renting this one.
Yeah, oh yeah, and that's.
Well.
But, he has more details on that, but the, the plan is literally, it'll probably be fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars after twenty, but it'll probably be fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars-ish. Um, we figured even if we rented them out at just twenty dollars, um, 'cause like, let's say we got roughly two hundred dollars a year out of each spot, um, we should be able to make our money back in about five years, we'll make this money back.
Does this request include any striping, bumpers?
We can stripe, yeah, we can, yeah, we can stripe on the, quick period.
It'd be complete, uh, complete.
And, and sign up, you know, stating that you have to purchase the spots, and one number each spot, and.
Cool.
And that's where you have apartments down that road too, that's where you, they, they're responsible for these too?
I'm, I'm, I'm still on this, he did a whole thing on this, he'll talk to it, but, there is, our city ordinance requires that a, an apartment has to have parking spots, and he knows, he has all the details on it, he'll talk to it, but, this will give them, 'cause people who don't have that ability to actually meet the ordinance is gonna give them that opportunity to meet the ordinance by renting their spots. Um, and, and the storefronts are supposed to have spots for their people too on the street, so this is gonna allow, all those shops are blowing up, I don't know if you've been down through there during the days now?
It's busy.
Oh, it's packed, that, that down, down Ohio Avenue is packed now.
The only question I have is about, if we use that alley like as an exit?
Mm-hmm.
Are we gonna have to do it with the angle parking there, because it's gonna be really hard to get in and out there?
I think that's going by by anyway in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, we had talked about.
I think it's twenty, yeah, there's gonna be some.
Right, but I mean, if you can strike, there's what, there's gonna be four spots that we're gonna have to just change.
We'll take a look at it, once they're gonna wanna, you talked before about the exit, when it exits out?
Yeah.
The entry wa- the entryway would be off of Broadway.
Yeah, the entry come off, they come in Broadway.
Okay, then exit out that way, but then you'd have to see.
So they won't have to swing around the back of that angle parking.
So maybe one spot will have to go away on the, that end spot, 'cause it's, you know, it's hanging over.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to look at it, we'll, we'll fix it though for sure.
And quick question.
Well, that would also eliminate the trucks hanging out in the middle of the street.
Correct.
If there's illegal parking in that area of people who aren't running the spots, is the city responsible then for towing books out of there?
Well, we, we, we will tow, yeah, that'll, it was kind of a very clear sign to state that, that way people know that, you know, that is paid parking, you can't just give that.
Okay.
There wasn't any very clear.
And will this be hang tags or?
Yeah, I've got it in here.
Okay.
I laid it out for you.
Okay. How did I not see that?
It was a view.
Oh, okay, okay, alright, thank you.
No problem. We've done some homework on this one, we're trying to make it as smooth as we can, and, I, I think it's one of the best, we gotta do something for that downtown area, 'cause all those shops are filling up, and there's just nowhere to park now.
It's a good problem to have at the end of the day.
It's a great problem to have, absolutely, but I think we need to do something to.
Yep, for sure.
How many spots do you think it'll wear?
We haven't laid it out yet, we haven't laid it out yet, at, at least ten, hopefully more.
Yeah, more, I think, I think, yeah, double side, I think we'll, we'll lay it out and get a good number for you.
Cool.
Come here.
Alright, so I have a lot to my office, we're gonna have a big corn tonight, but, um, a couple of things, uh, Kelly Lambert Park is nearing completion, um, hundred twenty-five thousand dollar project there, I think it's one twenty-seven, when you done with it. But, um, if you've been down, if you haven't been down there, the equipment's going in, it's looking beautiful.
It looks great.
It does, it's really impressive equipment, so, um, big thank you to O B and R for helping us out with that, and obviously, you guys approved the funds, the other half of that, so it all came from us, um.
What about lighting down there, are we improving the lighting any at all, or?
There's nothing on it right now, but yes, there will be lighting improvement down there, yes, but right now, during this phase of it now.
'Cause I hate to say it, you have built and then destroyed.
Yes, agreed. Um, we need to get, we need, we need to figure out where to get cameras down there, to detect them, um, transportation safety study, uh, so we got approved through O B, uh, O B R B C, um. Uh, big thank you, actually, John Carey set this up for us, he got us in contact with O B R B C, who got us in line for a traffic, traffic safety study from Fourteenth Street to Tenth Street. Um, we're in the process right now, they're gonna pick a, today they farm that out, they don't actually do it in-house, they farm it out, it's twenty thousand dollars-ish, um, that they, that we got approved for. Um, they're gonna come in, with a couple of all this stuff we have going on, once again, just the economy's booming down on that end of town also, between McDonald's, um, Taco Bell, the expansion that we discussed, um, Montgomery Trucking, uh, the amount of work that Destiny Trucking is getting down the road now with their school being mandated, um, we're just getting the A E P being right there, we just have a ton of stuff going on in that one little corridor. Um, a lot of accidents there last year, way more than I thought, I think it was fifty-two when we looked at it, fifty-two accidents in that one little stretch of road, um, so a lot of accidents, luckily no fatalities, 'cause no one's going more than ten miles an hour through there. Um, so, no fatalities or anything like that, but it's definitely a safety concern, so O B R B C is really leaning in on it, they have it listed right now, the two million dollar project to widen and stripe it. Um, so hopefully, uh, during the safety study, we'll, our recommendations come out of that, and we'll move forward on, on fixing that problem.
Right.
Um, the red lights, 'cause I know this has been a drawn-out process, it has been painful, um, I don't know if you saw them in town working, uh, if you haven't, if you go through town now, you're gonna notice all the placards are on the poles, the buttons are on now. Uh, the, the last step, the metering one, they've gotta come through a program, the actual camera's not gonna recognize everything, and then they're gonna be live, um, so we're expecting within a week or so those cameras will all be live, and we're actually.
So while they're here, did you ask them about the pedestrian?
I did, they haven't gave me a price yet, so we, we're still on it, that, that, I'm on, there's a chance I'm gonna look somewhere else.
And just to clarify, 'cause in case anybody lis- are we, we're live tonight?
Yes.
Okay, um, so that is the side streets, that, that's going to detect people pulling up to Pennsylvania Avenue from a side street, and then it will control the light from there.
Yes.
Otherwise, the light on Pennsylvania will stay green.
If you go out at two o'clock in the morning, you're gonna see green lights from one end to the other.
Right.
Unless somebody pushes a button.
Right, unless somebody pushes a button or somebody approaches from a side street.
Yes.
Okay, cool.
That'd be the only thing that'll turn the lights, so going through town will be dramatically easier, um, after this. And the last thing I got, this is many questions, the last thing I got for you, A May, the new service director, Jeff Mason's done an amazing job, but he's wearing two hats right now, um, so, the service director and utility director, so he's still, he's doing both, but, um, the new service director will be your A May, so we'll be kicking that off.
Thank you, Jeff.
I do have a question, one question.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
You sent us a text about, uh, putting a, a turn lane all the way, a while back, is this what you were talking about?
Yeah, oh yeah, that's where the, that's where the study's gonna come in and look at.
'Cause I never heard any more about that.
At the, in, in thirteenth, or at the, from fourteenth to thirteenth.
Almost hint is where they're going to, where they.
Why can't you just go all the way through town?
They could, and.
Eliminate parking on the street.
The cost is a cost, that's, and maybe we could, we could look at redoing it in the future, but.
The width.
The width.
'Cause it's, it's not in the same width, pretty much the whole.
So down there is not wide enough?
Oh, okay, but up here it is.
Yeah, the, the, yes, the width on this side is a lot better.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we would have to, they're gonna have to widen it, there is right of way down there, um, if you, just to give you the next step of your, like essay?
Mm-hmm.
You know where that curve is they have on the inside of their paddock, they have the, the outside curve, the sidewalk, and that inside curve?
Mm-hmm.
The right of way for the city goes all the way to that.
Okay.
Um, so we, we're obviously gonna take that much up, but we'll probably gonna have to go to the sidewalk with it, um, to get enough space, so that's, that's their, their rough plan right now.
Alright, Mr. Service Director.
Um, what I have is, uh, the stuff that we're doing, uh, I wanna thank you guys for appropriating money for us to, we do a lot of unseen stuff that doesn't look like we improved the town. But we're improving stuff daily, uh, the progression is great, um, we're, we're starting in June, the big four point one million of the separation, which, it, we're gonna tear up a lot of stuff. Uh, I asked the people to be patient with this, 'cause the road's gonna be tore up, I mean, it, it will be tore up, um, but it's one of those things where it, it's not gonna beautify anything except underneath. But it's gonna save us millions in the treatment plant, so that, that will start, I think June one is the, is the set date, we got a pre-construction we can forget in, uh, next month. So, I'm, I'm excited about it, because it's something that, that has needed to be done in a long time, it just wanna save us a lot, a lot of money, that we'll be able to do something else with. As far as the infrastructure crew, there, we have three jobs that we're gonna be able to do this year, you guys give me probably the best budget I have ever had to work with. A lot of the stuff we're going to do won't be seen, but it is going to save overtime, and, and that's the, uh, we'll be replacing a lot of nineteen thirty-six water lines, so, just, it, it's not, people don't think it's much, but it is, it's huge, it's areas that we go to, it's like Ground Hole Day, you know, those guys are going out there and, and, and just banding it to where we're gonna be able to, with our own crews, with our own guys, go in and put in a new section of pipe and, and make that bad area disappear, so, um, other than that, then, we're, we're gonna be starting painting concrete, we're gonna start off where we left off last year, sidewalk, come up the road, um, starting around Darrows and coming up, um, replacing sidewalk. Hopefully, money's pretty tight, hopefully, I'll get all of this, um, east side done to, to, uh, de-street, uh, maybe, maybe come back down a little bit the other side.
Great.
The asphalt patching, you guys know, I mean, they, they do it every day, we do it every day, asphalt plant actually hasn't started up yet, but we're still doing a patching and doing cold mix. Uh, I think we've got five streets we're paving, so, it's, it's not miles, but when we started the water meter project, we couldn't get it down either, and now it's done with and over with, and nobody even talks about it. So, you gotta start somewhere to get it done.
Sure.
And I just, I like to mention my guys, because they're the unsung hero in this, they, we got a lot of good guys in the right places who care about the city of Welston. I've got Ryan Sowers that, that leads the, the water sewer crew, and I got Phil Thompson running the infrastructure crew, and Sean Moore running the street department, and all their guys, I mean, you guys know that three o'clock in the morning, a lot, at least once a week, they're out fixing a water line that nobody even knows, and, and it's a special trait for the water and sewer guys, and I, I mean, we have some really good, really good guys in the right places that makes, that's making the town better. We've improved a lot on the lift stations, you guys has appropriated money that we have, the, the station was a problem, and now they're starting to take the backseat, which is a, in, in just a year, which is a, a great thing.
Is the one down in Berlin finished?
Yes.
Oh, that's done, how much did that end up costing us, roughly?
Total, I'd have to go and run through it all, but just the pumps along, what do you reimburse for the pumps, so, what, thirty-six thousand? We spent twenty, thirty-nine, we spent twenty-four thousand dollars digging it up, and then repair we did down there, um, then, Lord knows how many A May hours, so to get you a solid number.
Seventy, uh.
So that's better than what we thought.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, it wasn't, didn't hear the mirrors got it, because, I mean, it's still a lot of money out of our budget we did not plan for, but it had.
But it's fixed, and it's a fix that's gonna last.
Yes. It had to.
Yes.
Yeah, it had to happen, so, very unfortunate, but it, it.
It's, it's, yeah, it's, now it's new.
Yep, that's great.
One thing we need, though, we had a problem there until we started, and we had a lot of big problems, we just faced, so, yeah, it was good.
Uh, we also hired a new mechanic, which is great, I mean, I think it's the first time we've ever had a full-time mechanic, uh, he's a great guy from Oak Hill, Wesley Bryant, uh, really nice young guy, that's really knowledgeable. Um, it's, it's amazing, it's just nice to take it back to his shop and him fix it for us instead of waiting a, a week or two or whatever.
Pay a lot more for it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's, it's very.
Awesome.
And he's multi, so he's like, like, he's doing more than just fixing cars too, I mean, I got, even the things we give him, he's on it, he's, he's a fabricator, he'd make things.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's. He's a fabricator. He's a wire technician, he's a pump guy, he's, we're very lucky to have him, it's, it's worked out really well.
Cool.
Uh, and also, I wanna mention my part-timers, because we have some really good part-timers that's been with us for five or six years, that's part-timers, that m- makes my job easier and his job easier, that we lean on, and, um, and just, um, David Barney and Elvis Kern to take care of the cemetery, it's something, I mean, you got a target on your back all the time, and they do a really good job, and for the first time, we've got mowers and stuff that we don't have to worry about, that does a great job, that care, that, they're gonna get that mowed during the week, which, which makes a big deal. That's all I have.
Do you have any questions? Alright, law director?
I don't have anything to report, I've been working with mayor on some title issues with the L V, but, uh, looks like they're getting resolved, and, uh, a few things to do on Harvest Crossing, to get that approved, and other than that, nothing else.
Any others report?
No, sir.
Clerk's report? Treasurer's report?
No, sir.
Fire?
Alright, pull this over here so you can hear me, so it gets recorded, anyway, um, the fire report looks like this, it's in your packet on your, on your desk, just one page, says E S O at the top. Um, I'll be quick on the fire, we had forty-six calls for service in the month of March, um, there are over one hundred types of calls, it just shows you the ones that we responded to at the bottom. You'll note we had three house fires, um, two of those are mutual aid outside the city, um, but you'll see where we had a spike between March twenty-second and March twenty-sixth, um, of calls, so it was a busy month. Forty-six runs for us is a, is a busy month, that's over one a day, so, we've been busy, so you've heard lots of sirens, um, no injuries to report, so it's a busy month, but a, but a productive month for us. Daryl has started the inspections, of course, he's out doing the business inspections that we do, we inspect every business in town, um, that's part of our job, we have to do that, we're supposed to do that. Uh, so he's out, you know, doing his part, and the academy, of course, is going strong, you might have saw, um, in the, in, in the media where we had received that fifty thousand dollar grant that you appropriated for us to spend. Um, it was free money from, uh, T C Energy Gas Company, we got those props installed, those are props, what those are for, uh, we do gas training for, and we could do that for the gas company, but those props are for structural firefighting training, instead of burning pellets and straw, we can burn propane and set those props underneath, let's say, a car, or, or different types of props, so, um, it's really, uh, gonna help us train firefighters all over the state, so we're pretty excited about that, we've already started using them, so, that's the fire, any questions on the fire side, or?
Um, we did talk about, uh, tornado alarms, did you ever look into that, or?
I apologize, I did not, I need to get with, uh, Robert Sevillesky from the county, our E M A director, um, he and I had a conversation about those two years ago. Um, he, uh, uh, Whittaker Wright, you've heard that name, Whittaker Wright, from, uh, what is the name of that company, Anthony?
CDC.
CDC of Ohio, he helped Colton come up with a, with the funding for tornado sirens, so, I might reach out to Whittaker to get some, you know, more information to see.
Okay, that's true.
But, um, a lot of communities have, you, I mean, a lot of folks think that Welston is not prone to, which we aren't prone to tornadoes, but we could have one, it just depends on where it touches down, so, we have had them touch down at Lake Elma, Hampden, so it does happen, so I, it wouldn't be a bad thing for us to study, and I will take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then I'll, uh, your, the letter I wrote you for, I told you at the last meeting that I was at, that I would come up with some answers to the parking downtown, um, and what I found was, obviously, we had, and I knew we did, we had, we have an ordinance on off-street parking, so, when you turn to the third page where it talks about the different types of business, how many off-street parking areas that those businesses are supposed to provide, um, and if you are bored and you wanna read all that, you can, but I will take you to the final one on the fourth page, single or multifamily residence, two per unit, so, those apartments downtown should provide two off-street parking spaces per apartment. Now, I, I understand, I mean, that, that's gonna be somewhat impossible, for the most part, for some of those folks, um, and I've been in contact with some of those landlords to advise them that we, we gotta come up with a plan, um, so this municipal parking lot will be a great start, and on the first page, what, what our, what our thoughts were, that the service director and mayor have met about, and they've got the, the nuts and bolts together to, to, to construct the parking lot, and then, my thoughts were, I don't know if you've seen our door hangers that we hang for like, um, trashcan issues or mowing issues, we would order a plastic door, or window hanger like you would have for the schools, that would have a number, and then we'll paint the curb that same number, and then they will rent that space for the year, for the month, however we decide to do it, and not, not, not expensive, but just so that it's reserved, and then our police and myself can patrol that, and then if someone's parked there without the sticker, then we would tow that vehicle to our impound lot. So that would be the plan.
Would you have to come up with, uh, like a fine or a fee or something for?
I think there's already one in place.
Okay.
Currently, I think it's five dollars, and, I mean, that's.
We could adjust that.
We could adjust that if need be, but, but, uh, the, the, the main.
That's a parking spot in Columbus.
Correct, yeah, right, but, um, you know, all those rules are in place, we just need to, to review them like we, like we've done here, but, to placard the vehicle, and, uh, and, and, and I noted in the letter to, for us to keep in mind that, for us to go out and start enforcing that, like, to the book, to the letter, would be difficult with, with our downtown not having any activity over the last several years, and then we go in and say, okay, now all of a sudden we have to start, you know, enforcing this, I feel like a gradual approach in, in working and communicating with everyone, getting out to the media, and, and coming up with a plan to start, but that, that's the plan that we have so far, and would love to have any input that you, as counsel, would have, that you would like to see, but I wanted you to have that to look at.
So just one question, 'cause just thinking through kind of the, the flow again, you said they would enter off of Broadway and they could exit through an alley behind E R A?
Next E R A.
Yeah, next to.
Go out behind E R A and then turn up the side of it.
Okay, when we have the streets closed, I guess the only thing that's popping into my head, so like when we have Oak Hill go downtown.
They'd have to turn left and go out past.
Okay, but they'll still be able to get in and out, okay, okay.
How many apartments are downtown?
So, for example, um, what I call cards and keep, or kings and things, you remember that? Uh, updraft, yes, thank you, updraft, um, there's four apartments, there will be four apartments there.
Okay.
Um, you also have locker insurance where there is now apartments above locker insurance, and then we have, um, more apartments as you go south on Ohio Avenue, so, um, I don't know if we could discuss, maybe, uh, it's a, it's a, and you'll notice in the rule that, um, they, the landlord has to provide parking within two hundred feet of the residence as well, so, I was thinking the old Kupenheimer Taco Factory lot, but that's gonna be farther than two hundred feet for some of those, so.
Unless we change the rule.
Right.
Unless we change the rule, right, so, we, we could talk about that, maybe doing municipal parking there as well until something develops later, but, that's that, and then, um.
Wonder, had anyone thought about or trying to do a, well, it'd be hard to enforce that, put a time limit on parking downtown, 'cause that would eliminate that if you had a two or four.
Well, the parking meters years ago did a lot.
Monitoring would probably be the issue, the monitoring would be the issue.
Yeah.
The enforcing.
You either have to have meters or you gotta mark tires.
Yeah. Then you have somebody go around and look at that too.
You could make the whole downtown no parking after midnight, thing like midnight, or even two in the morning, from two to four in the morning, no one's allowed to park on the downtown area, 'cause that's how you're gonna figure out the people who's just, you know, long-term parking there. No one should be out, and then none of the stores are open at that time, so, that'd be one way, we could, that'd be easy to enforce, if the cops started down and see a car sitting down there at two in the morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's an easy enforcement, so, we could look, we could look at options, or, may have something, when it comes close to the time, we can send it to committee and figure out something. This is option.
There's a couple bars downtown too, if you would do something like that, I don't know if the people would feel great about leaving their car knowing it might be towed in the morning.
If they're drunk and it would drive you.
Yeah, is there be responsibility?
That is, that is a fair point, we'd have to, you have to examine that, yeah.
I watch.
And then you have your code report that you can look through, and if you don't have any more questions for me, I'm, that's all I have.
Um, police.
Okay, so I sent out the monthly report, and it's, uh, should be right there in front of you, um, we got a lot of things happening in the police department right now. Uh, it's been a long month or so, we've had several guys off with injuries and illness, um, but we're starting to come back, guys are starting to come back in and get off of light duty and stuff. Um, we got over twenty titles, like twenty-six to be exact, I think, of cars that we're getting ready to list on GovDeals, we've actually sold two of them already, um, that's a long process as well, but it's a, a good moneymaker for our department, in a sense, um, we moved our dispatch, I don't know if you're familiar with the police department at all. Uh, if you've been down there, dispatch is not where it used to be, it's in an office that used to be my office, that's completely blocked around, um, I had concerns about the drywall and ease of access from someone that really wanted to do some damage, um, so we moved it to the most secure location in the department, it's completely surrounded with no outside, uh, no outside access. And then the people seem to like it, and then also, in the process, we brought ourselves up, technologically, we're kinda getting a little more modern and preparing for some things, um, we've got new body cans, we talked about it in council several months ago, um, those are in, and we're gonna start transitioning to those next week. We currently have been saving all of our, uh, footage locally on external hard drives, and we probably went through seven or eight of those over the last six years. Um, this is all gonna be electronic, it all goes to the cloud, stays on the cloud, prosecutor's office, law director. Um, this is all gonna be electronic, it all goes to the cloud, stays on the cloud, prosecutor's office, law director's office can just go get it from the cloud. Um, it's gonna save us a lot of time in, in burning DVDs for, for, uh, prosecutors. I think that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
We're in the process of hiring Wellesley.
Oh, that was the other thing, yeah, we're giving a test, uh, Saturday, at ten o'clock, right here in the council chambers, um, I circulated our flyers on Facebook, uh, put them up, uh, in the city building. Um, sent them to all the local police academies, we had two people apply, um, so those two guys are gonna come and, and take the test Saturday morning, so.
Anything else, anybody? All those in favor, adjourning, say aye.
Aye.